We are on the air.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'm Tom Boeck, Chairman of the Kenny Bunkport Planning Board. This is a virtual planning board meeting. We're using a Zoom conferencing format. The agenda is on the town's website. Information needed for the public to participate. If you wish to participate through Zoom, the webinar number is 944-9943-4318. You can also dial in by phone at 929-205-6099, and then you enter that same 944-9943-4318 number. If you're conferencing in by phone and watching it on TV at the same time, you have to turn down the volume or you'll have feedback. As always, you can watch us on Channel 1301 on cable or on YouTube Kenny Bunkport Television. During the meeting, only planning board members and the current participant are selected by the board will be on the screen with audio connected. All other participants will be will be blacked out and audio muted except when the board expects public input. Ask that every take turns and allow others to speak. If a public hearing is on the agenda, which it is this evening for the first item only, then when it comes time for the for this, the applicant and board members will have discussions first, but I will open up the public hearing. At that point, anyone who wishes to be heard will have to raise their hand digitally on Zoom, which if you're using a Zoom app, that's fine. If you're on the phone, you raise your hand by saying star six. Okay, so I'm going to take the role. I'm here, Tom Boeck. Nina?
Yeah.
Scott?
Here.
Ed?
Here.
And Larry?
Here.
Okay, and our our other, our two associate members, George and John will not be here tonight. John has got an important fifth birthday party for a grandchild, and he just had his his second COVID shot last week, so he's all set. Anyway, so the first thing on the agenda is the approval of minutes. So everyone read the minutes?
Yes.
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 All set with them?
Yep.
Okay. Could I have a motion, please?
So I move to accept the minutes as written.
I'll second it.
Okay, now I'm going to call the roll again for completeness. I'm in favor. So, excuse me. Nina?
In favor.
Scott?
In favor.
Ed?
In favor.
Larry?
In favor.
Okay, which brings us to the first item on the agenda, 201, 004 Ivy subdivision, Sibego Tech meets authorized agent. So we have to bring in Steve and Ralph, I guess. Get Steve Doe, Steve Doe and Ralph Austin into the conversation. No, Steve. Steve Doe.
That's on the list.
There we go. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, good.
All right, nice everybody. Okay, I guess you can proceed, Steve or Ralph, whoever's starting.
Okay, I assume I can share my screen with the board?
Fine with me.
All right.
Okay, you should be able to do that now.
All right. All right, can you see the screen now?
Starting to share. There it is.
So I pulled up, I got several drawings I'll go through, but really wanted to update the board where we were since the last meeting. The last, we had a site walk out there and there was questions on numerous folks from both ends of the project. So we revisited it and made some changes to the plan. And I had a letter, which I'll kind of go through that outlining where we're at. And then I guess answer any questions. So, starting on the plan, some of the simple things are we've renumbered the lots 2A and 2B. 2A is the lot in this area. 2B is the one over here. The driveway to lot 2A, we made some changes to that, and I'll just kind of zoom into that so you can see that. If you recall, the old driveway came in right here. And then it came up, it crossed the wetlands over here, and then terminated somewhere up in here. Based on comments on Mrs. Perkins, her circular driveway is right here, as you probably recall in the site walk. And so we shifted the driveway so it doesn't impact her a lot. We created an easement for her driveway. And we created a new driveway coming in here. The hatched area is a wetland impact, so we got a greater wetland impact over here for that. But I'll talk about how we try to mitigate that elsewhere on the property. So anyways, new driveway comes in here. And then instead of crossing here, we crossed at this narrow spot right over here. And in doing so, we made some lot line changes to the open space. The lot line originally came here. And so we've shifted it here, and then we pulled it out over here that so we have an equal amount of land in the open space in the lots. So anyway, we're crossing here at a narrow spot. And then the road pretty well continues where it was originally up to this location here. And then we've defined a building envelope in this area. So up in the upper plan here, the sheet, we had vernal pool calculations, which was requested by the butter. It was a very good comment in that anything within this 250-foot radius of this vernal pool, we can't disturb any more than 25% without going through a permit with the DEP. The permit by rule process allows us to disturb 25% of that. So I'm going to show you a plan. So this is what we envision, or this is what we defined as the disturbed area. So what you see in green is just slightly under the 25%. So we've counted the whole road coming in, and then we've defined this building envelope on the lot. And all of that combined, assuming they cleared this whole area, would be 25% of what the land area is in this radius. The land actually has, they could still build over here, so they can expand beyond that if they want. But this is all that they can clear in this zone here. Back to this drawing. So that's kind of the changes down at, oh, yeah, that's the changes down at that end. And then down here on End Cliff, if you recall, the hammerhead turnaround was in this location here. Based on comments from Alexandra and Tony Buxton, Alexandra lives here, Tony lives over in this area. We shortened the cul-de-sac of the hammerhead and actually have the turnaround in what is the Central Avenue right of way. So it's a lot shorter, and then the lot access can come off the end of that and make its way into the lot. We also had a couple note changes on the plan, which were pretty minor. I think you probably can read that yourself. Another change was at the request of the Buxtons, we've added a 30-foot side yard setback over here. And they in turn are going to do one on their lot, just to provide a little more separation between the developed areas of the lot. Ultimately, I'm going to be doing an amended plan for the Buxtons, taking out the hammerhead easement that's located about here. And when I come back with that, we're also going to show the 30-foot easement on that plan. The End Cliff road, right away, we have narrowed, or we haven't narrowed the road, but we have made the shoulders to be loaned and ceded. There was also a letter you probably saw from Chief Everett today, maybe a correspondence from me. And that related to can you, I guess you can't see that plan. I lost that plan. Anyway, that plan I was going to show you, you received an email, and if you recall, End Cliff continues down to Poet's Lane. And down at the entrance of End Cliff and Poet's Lane, there was a ledge, a narrowing of the road down there to accommodate some ledge. And then as you head further up End Cliff, where we're going to be widening it, there was some additional ledge that we were going to have to take out to accommodate the road as previously designed. And the Buxtons were concerned about the blasting for that. So I sent a letter to Chief Everett to ask if there was any opportunity that if we encounter ledge, could we narrow the road any? And he responded back that he would allow the narrowing of one of the shoulders so that we still maintain 18 feet of travelway through there versus the road designed at 22. We won't know until we actually get into building the road. If we hit ledge, our intent is is try to get the 22, and if we have to hammer the ledge, we can do that. But if we have to get into blasting, we may look to see if we can shift the road slightly to avoid that or go with the narrower shoulders. And then there is something I want to comment on is we received Stormwater peer review comments. We've looked through those. We don't see anything that's of major concern to us in that, and we're going to respond to those fairly soon and get response back to Acorn Engineering. That's all I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board has.
Steve, you mentioned building envelope. So you're not actually putting a building envelope on the plan. It's just a, because of the the vernal pool, you have that that space, because you just mentioned it could, you could build outside the 250 also.
Well, what we've done, we have defined the building envelope. So, you know, if you took your setback all the way around the lot, you could have a setback here and build over here. But we purposely defined the building envelope right here.
Yeah. Okay, so that is the building envelope. It will be on the plans as such, which means that you have to come back to see us if somebody wants to put a house somewhere else.
Exactly, yeah. And there's a note on the plan that talks about that.
Good, okay, just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, that was something Werner had requested, which was a good comment, you know. So they come in for a building permit, and we have to deal with the slot coverage. You know, Werner needs to be able to track that, so it was a good comment.
But I understand. Okay, in answer to one of the questions, could you state unequivocally that you have no interest in connecting the roads?
We have no interest in connecting. That probably relates to this here. There will be no connection here. We're terminating our road here, and that's, that's the extent of it. There's no connection. And you could walk through there, but we're not building a road through there.
Yeah, that's, I knew that. It's just for some reason he didn't. So I guess he was looking at the, the right of way is still drawn on the drawing, so it sort of looks like it's connected, but
Yeah.
Okay, I just want, I just want our friends in the UK to understand that.
Understand.
Okay, I guess I'm all set. Ed, do you have stuff?
I have a question or two. Tom, you just hit on the one of them with that a butter's letter. And just as a side thought to that, is there a dependency on that woods road as part of an emergency egress plan from the inn? By the words, if you, if you put up a barrier that prevented someone from driving with their four-wheel vehicle from End Cliff on through down behind the inn, wouldn't you be in fact infringing on the emergency egress for the inn?
We're not planning on putting up a barrier.
I understand.
Okay. I mean, somebody could go through there with a four-wheel drive. It's not really an emergency access, you know, that they have. It's not defined as an emergency access. And talking with the fire chief, if he was to fight a fire at the inn, the best fire hydrant, and this plan doesn't show it, is down over here where Dover Lane comes into Arlington. That's where he would pull water in, and he'd come up Dover Lane and fight the fire at this building. He wouldn't come up End Cliff unless he really had to, but unless this was blocked. But the best water source is down here.
Okay, and I had a question about the vernal pool. I may have missed it, but what is it that caused this vernal pool to be designated as a significant vernal pool?
It's based on the egg counts. We did a vernal pool study on that several years back, and it's based on the egg count that makes it a significant vernal pool.
For a certain species, right?
Yes, wood frogs, certain types of salamanders.
All right. So that's on the record somewhere that it really is a significant vernal pool?
We have documents on it. It hasn't been recorded with the DEP, but once we go ahead and file, because we have to file two permit by rules with the DEP, just to be clear. We've got to file a permit by rule for the vernal pool impacts. And then we have to file a permit by rule for the stream crossing over here. We'll do that in one application, but that'll probably at that point, this will be registered as a significant.
All right, so that'll be captured in the final, basically.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Okay, Nina, you have anything?
Yeah, I got a couple of questions. When the Perkins built their house, is there any impact on the vernal pool from, from their construction?
That house has been there a long time, as far as I know.
Okay.
You know.
It's not significant. You show the road coming in there and going, and I don't know whether it stops where the triangle is of, you know, wetlands.
Right here?
Yeah, it looks like you've got road extended all the way down to the, to the lot 2B, but it seems to me it doesn't make any sense to end basically at that triangle right now.
Well, just to clarify, so this is the driveway to get to this lot here.
Right.
But this, this easement, this is actually going to be an easement. We have to clear and bring utilities all the way up to here.
Okay, that's what I thought. I thought it might be sewer or something, but I
It is sewer. Yeah, the stewards come in there, and they also wanted to have a pedestrian easement. So we got a pedestrian easement coming. And that don't tie this road to the travel, like without too
Lot 2B will have an easement there?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And you're planning to have the Stormwater management document for us?
Yes.
Eventually.
Yeah.
I have no other questions right now.
Okay, Scott, you have anything?
I do, and I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so along the lines that Ed was asking, I just, if we could get a clarification, of course, I've had this open and now it's gone, okay. And this is for, from a butter dachan that is in the United Kingdom. I just wanted a clarification on the town of Kenny Bunkport in his letter, recorded. So who, was that recording on property deeds? Or just from the, from the enforcement officer at the time or the fire chief? Who might that be? That represents the town of Kenny Bunkport? Because he goes on to say that represents a binding agreement that forecloses and it stops applicant from now changing the use of the two roads, including as such. So how was, how was that, how was that recorded?
I haven't read his letter fully, but I'm thinking maybe it was on the subdivision plan when we did
It's connecting the two roads, and it states
The finding effects of that, of one of them, I forget which one, but it was
Probably when we broke out this lot here.
Actually, the finding I was looking at was that last discussed the road, I thought was, was was for the Terrillan stuff, you know, for the Chickadee Trust was talking about not leaving the
Leaving the What's the Ivy subdivision?
Not approving it or whatever it was. I don't know if that's what they're referring to.
I'm thinking he's probably referring to the Ivy subdivision.
Okay.
Yeah, for Ivy subdivision, 2012, that probably 2012 had to be for when this lot here was broken out.
Right.
And we made this turnaround here. There might have been something regarding the Woods Road, which would have been this, would have been the Woods Road at the time.
The Woods Road between the two.
Yeah.
And, and Cliff Road.
Right.
So the butter that Ed had mentioned, Dachan in the UK, those roads are being left alone, right?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ed. I asked Ed already. Larry?
Actually, I did, I did have one more thing I failed to ask, so thank, thank you, Tom. Steve, we talked briefly the last time about the possibility of do a little more homework on a road maintenance agreement.
Yes.
Wasn't clear to me how all of this was going to play out. Have you got any more thinking on that?
Yes, Ralph's been, on the End Cliff piece, Ralph has been talking with the folks down at End Cliff, and he's got that pretty well wrapped up on a road maintenance. There is a road maintenance agreement already out there, and so we're just kind of tacking onto it. Ralph could probably comment more. Down here at I'm calling it Perkins Way for lack of a name. The only people that use this now is Mrs. Perkins.
Yeah.
And now we're, we're going to be in that. So Ralph has drafted a a very similar maintenance agreement for this end here. So I'll have to get with Mrs. Perkins and get her on board with that, so that these two owners will have access to that.
And we can see that presumably, but you have a final?
Sounds great.
Yes.
All right, Larry?
Well, I just had one short question that also has to do with this rather extensive commentary from Mr. Duck and Miss Maka, who are in London, apparently. They, they talk a lot about this subdivision plan that's recorded on April or approved on April 18th, 2012, and recorded on April 26th, 2012. They seem to be fixated on that plan, and then they actually conclude that any change from that plan is material prejudice and adverse impact on the enjoyment of properties, blah blah. Anyway, so is this current proposal drastic? Well, is it different enough from this so-called 2012 subdivision plan that there's going to be some additional pushback from, I don't know, some objections or something? That could, that could derail this project?
I, I don't know. Werner sent, there was some subsequent correspondence. And when he wrote this letter, he was looking at the old design that we had. He did not see this current plan. So he had thought that we still had this connection here. And I think that's where a lot of his concerns are. And then Werner sent him an email to link him to the new plans. And I believe that his concerns were put to rest, other than just us confirming tonight that we were not making that, that physical connection.
Well, he says that he's concerned any deviation or derogation from the 2012 subdivision plan is going to oppose a adverse impact. So I don't know how
That 2012 plan reserved to, reserved lot two for future development.
Right.
So it seems hard to believe that that's, that doing that future development is somehow in conflict with the original plan.
Okay, so the current plan aligns, you know, materially with the 2012 plan. I guess that's, that's the position.
Well, let's let Ralph comment.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think Tom stated it correctly. The 2012 plan set aside lot two, which is now being divided, we hope, into 2A and 2B for future development, but could not be developed without coming back to the planning board, which is what we're doing. So from our perspective, what we're doing is keeping materially the same as was contemplated in 2012. I don't think there's a material change from what was approved in 2012.
Okay, is it, okay, so this is just a, it's not a request necessarily, it's just really a question. So is it worth showing what was approved in 2012 and overlay this one on top of that one to show any differences? Is it worthwhile making that effort?
I think Go ahead.
I was just saying, what, what changed from 2012? I was just saying, what, what changed from 2012 is, and I'll just outline it, this lot here was created, or broken out, so this was the new lot in 2012 that was sold off, and the rest here was lot two. And I think Ralph, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this chunk of land here was also given to the end.
Yeah, it was.
Yeah.
That time, 2012, that was part of the plan that was shown to the board.
Yeah.
It's my, it's my understanding as well that there were a number of other, uh, that there were another, a number of other outsales that also occurred, I think, uh, to abutting property owners, you know, so ultimately, you know, uh, the substantive, you know, piece of development was the, was the, that first lot split that, that Steve mentioned, and then the rest of the development on that plan were conveyances to abutting parcels.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, I think, I think there was some over here. That's correct.
Okay, so, so, so the position now is that this current proposal aligns with the constraints defined in the 2012 subdivision plan, basically. And you're just coming back to the board to discuss lot 2B?
2A and 2B.
2A and 2B, yeah. Okay, well. Sounds good.
That's really the change from 2012 is we're proposing to divide lot two.
Okay.
Okay, any, any more from the board at this point?
Just a quick question. Because his letter is, you know, within the last week, and I'm sure he's gotten additional information according to what you're saying, but according to his, you know, what your county uh, recorded April 26th of 2012, specifically prohibiting the formal connection of End Cliff Road. I can't read the other one, my eyes aren't good enough. Um, so that's not going to happen, is that accurate?
Correct.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, if there are no more questions from the board, I believe it's time to open up the public hearing. So, uh, are there any raised hands?
One moment, I need to stop the sharing before I can see the list of participants. Yes, we have two raised.
Do we have any, any public hearing raised hands?
Yes, we do, one moment.
Bring someone in, please.
We have Raymond Schmoll. That's.
He's the presenter. Okay, but he's, he's, he's on the third item, right? On the agenda.
Two hand raised, that's all I know, and he's first in line.
Hmm.
But he's not unmuting himself, I will move on. Jim Martin. Jim, you should be able to speak if you unmute yourself.
Thank you, um, yes, Jim Martin here. I wanted to thank Steve and Ralph for addressing the, to give the Bernal Pool issue and doing the calculation that I asked for in the first part of this public hearing. I appreciate that, and it's clarified it all for me. Um, I did have a question about something Steve Doe said this evening. Uh, when he was discussing ledge on End Cliff Road and the, the ledge at the corner of End Cliff and Poets. There is some exposed there. It had been my understanding that um, you all were going to uh, do what um, Terrell and Swift had been required to do in the Chickadee subdivision. And I don't recall that there was any mention of, of doing anything down at that end of End Cliff Road, but simply extending the road up to her new lot, which is now the Alexandra Buxton Lot. So is there a plan now to, to widen the road all the way down to Poets Lane? And that's my question.
So, when, when we did the Chickadee Trust, um, we were gonna, we were required to widen End Cliff um, to the 22-foot width, all the way up from Poets Lane to the end of, of what was Terrell and's lot. Um, with the exception that down near Poets Lane, there's that big ledge that you can see when you, when you come down. Um, and the road snakes around to the left of that as you're heading up the road. And um, we were allowed to keep the road narrow there, as, so we didn't have to remove that ledge. But once we got past that ledge, we were required to widen that road out to the 22-foot width, all the way up.
Okay, I understand, so that's the current plan, you know, a little narrow at that junction of End Cliff and, and Poets.
Yeah.
Good, thank you very much, that's all I have.
Okay.
Okay, we have Nick Hucklebauer. Nate, you should be able to speak.
Okay, great, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, yeah, I, I represent Alex and Tony Buxton there, um, and spoke at the last meeting briefly, and just wanted to again say thanks to Ralph and, and Steve for working on, working through some of these issues and, and working to address some of the concerns for the, the Buxtons and the other, other neighbors, and also appreciate the, the Fire Chief's flexibility um, in, in, uh, in designing the extension for End Cliff Road to, to really try to minimize the impact on that neighborhood. And I think we're, you know, really working in the right direction, and that's uh, just all, I wanted to just uh, you know, make that comment and, and express that appreciation for the work that's been done.
Okay, anyone else?
I will try Raymond Schmoll, who still has his hand up.
Yeah, well, he's, he really belongs on the third item, so.
Shall I not allow him to speak?
If he wishes to speak, it's fine, but I.
He has a blue hand up, that's my only indication that he wishes to speak.
I understand that. And is that?
If you would like to speak, speak now. Alright, he's not acting, so I suggest we move on.
Thank you, okay. Uh, in that case, I, I guess uh, we're going to wait for the, for the final uh, uh, peer review. You're, we're going to wait for another two weeks then and, and try to wrap this preliminary up next time?
Well, I guess what I would, I would ask, if the board could approve it, the preliminary plan, and then we can work through the, the peer review for final.
I think, yeah, I think our position was if the peer review showed substantial problems or changes, then obviously, we wouldn't be asking for preliminary, but if I understand what Steve said to me earlier today and then again tonight, um, they weren't significant issues and that they can be worked around.
Yeah, we.
Or preliminary.
There would be added to my letter that says we're happy with the preliminary. So, uh, everyone else okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, and Ed, you could help me write the letter, I hope?
Certainly.
Okay. Alright, well, I, I, so.
So you're going to close, close the public? You're going to close the public hearing?
Yeah, I, I'm going to close the public hearing, thank you. And Werner, I think we need to take a vote right now, do, do we not?
Yeah, that would be good.
I would move that the application be, be approved.
I second it.
I don't, I think that we need to say that the application is approved, subject to um, uh, compliance with the Acorn Engineering Report.
That's, yeah, that's fine. It will be subject to the full compliance in the final submission.
Yep. And just to, you know, just to be clear, you know, and I think we say it, you know, at, you know, at all of the, you know, the preliminary approvals for subdivisions, uh, that you just make it clear to the applicant and to everybody that, you know, approval of the preliminary application doesn't, uh, doesn't gain any vested rights, uh, you know, for the project, but it's, it's merely a, you know, a permission, you know, that allows the applicant to move forward with submitting a final application and design.
Yep, that's not what I'm hearing Nina say. I thought Nina just asked us to approve it, prove the preliminary conditionally. I, I, I would be moving to approve it, and then the, the, the final will be reviewed in light of the engineering data and, and whatever other changes are made at that time. And, and to Werner's point, our approval of the preliminary, uh, does not guarantee approval of the final.
And, and my letter will certainly state that we expect to see the, the Acorn Engineering and Sebaco happy with each other.
Right.
Not exactly that wording, but.
I just feel uncomfortable because the, the one question I have left, basically, is on stormwater, basic, you know, and I expect the engineering to cover that. And I realize that the preliminary report does not give vested rights, but since we started asking for that engineering report quite a while ago, at the beginning of the preliminary, um, and we don't have it yet, I, I think it needs.
We have it, you do have it.
We don't have the, the, the Acorn Engineering reviewer, but we have the stormwater.
Yeah, well, whatever, however you want to describe it, um, I think they need to weigh in on that. And because we raised that question during the preliminary and we don't have, you know, basically, um, their way in on it, I think the, it has to be, the preliminary has to be approved, you know, subject to, you know, an Acorn Engineering report.
You think you could write down what we did?
Because we asked for it at the very beginning.
They do, the last submittal, Nina, we sent a full stormwater report to Werner, and he forwarded that off to Acorn Engineering, and they have reviewed it. So they, we have a review from Acorn Engineering, they had a, a response letter back to Werner that he sent to us. It had a couple of items on it that we need to address in our stormwater report and refine it and get it back to them. So it has been peer reviewed.
But, that, that, that's correct, and you know, it was my understanding that, you know, really the, you know, the conversation between, you know, between, you know, the two parties was that, you know, was, there was a desire to work through these processes, you know, beforehand, you know, before the resubmittal of a, of a full plan again. Um, and so hence, you know, hence we left this as a, you know, as a, you know, as a conversation between the two parties uh, before, you know, before having a, a final submittal to the board.
Alright, I don't remember seeing the, a letter from Acorn Engineering though.
Just came in, what, at the end of last week, Warner?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I, we're happy to, you know, ship that out to folks. Uh, you know, but my, you know, my understanding of what I, you know, what I, and what I can glean from it, and I'll, you know, be clear that I'm not a stormwater expert and, you know, uh, so a lot of it was, you know, technical discussion above my head, but I didn't come away with, you know, from, I didn't have the impression that it was, that there were significant disagreements.
That then, um, we can go with it, as long as Acorn has done a review.
Yeah, we've, we've always had little comments in the, in the letter of approval that says, you know, subject to all making uh, the stormwater thing be completely, all changes be incorporated into the necessary changes from the stormwater report be incorporated in the final. And that'll certainly be in the, in the letter, so.
Sure, because it might be another, it could be a pretty standing thing, and if in April, 33rd.
I couldn't hear that.
I'm sorry, is somebody speaking?
I don't think that's us.
Might be folks in my house. Hey, can you guys kind of keep it down a bit, you're coming into my mic. Sorry about that.
Somebody's got something in the freezer.
Yep.
Okay, well, may I? I'll second it.
Alright.
So, uh, I'm in favor, Nina?
Favor.
Okay, uh, Scott?
Favor.
Ed?
Yes, in favor.
Larry?
In favor.
Okay, so this is a preliminary plan, and the, the end of, the end of preliminary plan is a letter goes from the Chairman of the Planning Board to, uh, to the applicant that says we've approved you for taking the next move, we look forward to seeing your, uh, your final plan, and here's a bunch of things you agreed to, don't forget them. So, anyway, so Ed, Ed being the, the case manager could help me write that letter, that'd be wonderful. So, okay, well.
Thank you.
We go to the next item, and I think you two are still on screen, I bet.
I don't think Ralph is, but I am.
No, I'm leaving, bye.
Bye, Ralph, thanks.
Alright, the second item is item 210201, Kennybunk Report, Cunninghambunkport Captain's Collection LLC, DVA Main State Inn and Cottages. Now, just, what are we, can I ask Werner a question? What are we, what are we approving that isn't normally in a, what's, why is this here?
Sure, yeah, so what you have here is you have, you know, you have a, you know, a hotel, you know, in B and B, and so as such, that's a conditional use. This particular one, being located within Village Residential, uh, is a grandfathered legally non-conforming use. And so the reason why this application is in front of you, uh, is, you know, because they're making a modification to their site plan in regards to the parking. Uh, you know, that's the primary, you know, the primary and principal changes that, you know, that you're seeing on here. I mean, there's certainly, there's, you know, there's the landscape elements and some of the paths and whatnot that are, you know, that are complete and on the plan. Uh, but the principal change that, that comes before the planning board is this relocation of the parking.
Yeah, well, I, I read 7.7 of the plant, of the land use ordinance, and it specifically says, if the thing was built before this date, then this paragraph doesn't matter. And if it's built before this date, then this paragraph doesn't matter, so for instance, we don't have to worry whether you are covering 25% of the lot. Uh, we don't have to work, or whatever, 33, whatever the, the number is, we don't have to worry about the fact that you don't have 40-foot uh, boundaries, because those are both unspecifically accepted as not being needed, so I have to, I'm trying to figure out where it is non-compliant, so that we can say, yeah, it's non-compliant in these reasons, and that's what we're trying to say.
Well, it's, it's not, it's, it's non-conforming, you know, from the zone, you know, so it's within Village Residential, and so it's a non-conforming use.
Can't have a motel.
Right.
Yeah, but it's, the use they're not changing.
Correct, yes, but the reason why, why it's in front of you, right, they're not, they're not increasing a non-conformity.
Okay.
You know, but they're, you know, but they're relocating the parking, you know, the parking lot, you know, hence that, you know, that item's subject to a site plan review. It's not, it's not something that they, you know, that the Code Enforcement Office, you know, whenever you look in the list of items that are, you know, that are in the purview of the Code Office to issue permits for, this is not one of them.
Okay, understood.
So.
Sorry, Steve, go ahead. With your, with your presentation, it looks wonderful.
Alright, um, if I can share my screen, screen again, I can kind of go through the plan. I assume if I can do that? I am, okay. Alright. Um, so Ed, this is, um, I'll kind of zoom in a little bit to, let me go back, a couple of plans. Bear with me here. Did I lose them? Alright, looks like I lost some of the drawing, so I'll go, I'll, I had the whole plan set here, but I'm not seeing them. I had an internet problem before I started. problem before I started, but. So anyway, um, to clarify, this is where the inn is. These are the existing cottages. The existing parking lot comes in here. This is all existing pavement. It comes up here and then there's all pavement up in here. Um, and the plan is, is to get rid of all the parking in this zone and build a new parking lot over here. Um, and then in turn, this becomes kind of just a pedestrian experience, uh, for the people staying in the cottages. We create, I'll kind of zoom in a little bit more. So each cottage will have its own little outdoor dining area, little patio area with a, a little fire pit, um, gas fired fire pit, um, and creating these little private areas and then little gardens around them. Um, and then what, um, then there'll be access by foot by these gravel paths to get to all of that. And then that path will continue to this new parking lot, which is located over here. So we've taken all the cars that were in here, we're putting right there. Now, this is currently just a lawn area. If you've been out there, it slopes off from the road. Um, so we will be building this and filling that area for that. Um, this is a central lawn area. Um, and we're going to create these three kind of outdoor private areas. So then the balance of the site is landscaped. Um, one of the concerns I had with, with, uh, Rob Lud, who's the, uh, the owner of this, wanted to do that was how do the fire trucks get in there? How do you maintain this place? So I spoke with the fire chief and one of the, uh, the plans we're going to do is we're going to maintain this fire access drive up here. So this is where the existing road was. They got you up there. Um, and we're going to keep the gravel that's in there and, uh, allow for trucks to drive up into here. They'll be able to back up into here and then drive out again. Um, any planting, um, so that they can drive right over into that and get into that. Um, then, um, as I said, this is the parking lot, um, for the, the new guests. Uh, we are going to keep three spaces down in here with the dumpster. And then there's, um, existing parking along the street here that's specific for the main, uh, stay in. Uh, we're going to keep four of those, uh, right into here. The balance of these will be, uh, gone and accommodated. Um, I think Rob might be on the phone, uh, Rob Lud. Um, but if not, I think I could answer any questions that you have on that.
If Rob Lud is there, could he raise his hand?
Rob, Rob Lud?
I guess not. Okay.
Do you want me to allow him to talk or make him a panelist?
You can bring him forward in case, you know, the board has specific questions to him, but hopefully I can answer any, any questions.
All right. I'm promoting the panelist.
Yes.
I've been promoted to a panelist. I feel like this is the first job promotion I got in a long time.
Okay. I, uh, actually don't have any questions. I, my questions were for Werner. So, uh, so Nina, do you have anything?
Questions. The new parking lot, is that going to be an impervious surface or gravel?
Uh, pavement. So it'll be impervious.
Okay. Um, I don't have a problem with the plan except for the fact that when I looked at the deed, I saw several easements there. Um, some you should be aware of. One, you know, utility easement, so where the poles go and so forth, if you have to move any. But the ones that concern me are the easements with basically the town, uh, regarding shade trees.
Yes.
I don't know which tree that is. I looked up and I think it probably is an elm.
Yes. Um, right, right here, Nina?
Right there.
That's an elm. Uh, there's also three.
There were three on the street.
Yeah, these three here, that one are the ones. I did know a tag. This is an elm that has a tag on it. Um, these are two very large, um, Norway spruce. I don't know if those are tagged, but.
It wouldn't be much shade trees.
Yeah. So, yeah, this, these are the ones I was concerned, and I was concerned about the trees as well, especially being an elm. So the way we're constructing this parking lot is it's a fill situation versus an excavation, which an excavation would be problematic for the trees. Um, and as you know, this, this is all on now. So when we actually build this parking lot, um, the plan is to just scarify, uh, the surface, basically take off, you know, the, the grass, uh, but leave the organics, like the organic soil, tough soil and all that, leave all that in place. And then when they build the parking lot, that material is just placed on top of that. So we're not getting into the root system of those trees.
Okay. But are you changing the elevation there, it sounds like?
We are elevating it, yes.
Okay. Um, you might want to just consult briefly with, um, John Ripton from the Shade Tree Committee or Noah of Bartlett Tree and see what impact they think that might have on.
Yep.
Trees. I think there's another elm too, but I'm not sure it's on the property, but it's further back. Isn't there some, is there?
I don't remember another elm on the site.
On the next lot over, I couldn't tell from the tree viewer.
Yeah, I don't think there's another elm on the site. Just this one here is the only one I, I'm making her sing. But there are a lot of big trees out there and part of Rob's plan is to keep all of them that we can. I think there's only like a few in this parking lot here that were taken out, but all the rest are, are to be made.
Okay.
So really it's, it, that's what makes the property. That's what he's trying to preserve.
Well, I noticed that you're putting in an awful lot of vegetation, uh, most of it native, but, um, you might consider, um, water requirements there and whether you'll change, you know, the, the effects on the bigger trees.
Yes.
Do that.
Yep. That was one of the items Rob and I were, had been talking about is getting an arborist on board to look at what impacts it might be on the, on the, the big trees in the parking lot.
I would definitely do that since you're doing an awful lot of landscaping in there.
Yes.
Okay. Well, that was my question. So.
Okay. Um, let's see. Scott?
Yeah, just one question. So where the fire truck can come in, um, that'll be all gravel where now it's, uh, tar, right?
Correct. This, this parking lot here will remain pavement. But once you pass this point, this will all be just gravel path. Um, but they'll, we haven't, we provided 20 feet of width for the fire length. So this whole dashed area will be the fire length for them to come up in here.
And currently it's paved, but that'll be removed, right?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you.
Ed? Anything?
Yeah. Question on the, on the new parking lot. I didn't see any handicap spaces. I, I thought that ADA required you to have one handicap space.
You are. And correctly, Rob, is this an ADA space out here?
So this is an interesting question. That, that could easily be an ADA space. However, uh, we are not hitting a threshold that requires us to upgrade the property to be ADA accessible. And we're under, under 20 rooms. So we don't actually have an ADA accessibility requirement for the guest rooms. I mean, any of those street level proper, any of those street level spots could be an ADA spot.
Those regulated by the town, um, on the street there? Are those town spots?
I don't believe so. I think that's a curb cut into the mainstay property.
Okay.
Well, these are actually in the right of way, but I, I know there's signs out there along the street that say, you know, these are mainstay spaces.
How can you do that if they're in the right of way?
Well, there are a number, there are a number of areas in town, you know, that are unique that have that. Uh, but what, I'll, I'll look to see where that's memorialized. Uh, you know, typically, for example, uh, you know, the library has the benefit of a couple of spaces. Uh, you know, that's, that's specifically noted. That's the other circumstance that I'm aware of. Uh, you know, we'll take a look and see where we can find that documentation, uh, you know, for that.
Where would I look to, to find that, uh, ADA compliance, uh, is, is, uh, is not required under 20 rooms? I thought I had read that when you have from one to 25 parking spaces, one of them had to be an ADA compliant one. You're, you're saying there's a, there's a deviation that's allowed for motels that are less than 20 rooms?
Um, I'm saying that none of, the, the rooms do not have to be ADA compliant. I'm not aware that, uh, the parking spaces do not, but Steve, that wouldn't be a problem to make one of the spots ADA compliant, I don't think.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
No, it would be enlarged is all if they're wider.
We would have to enlarge one of them.
Steve, maybe, maybe the reception area, those three spots over by cottage one, we could make two spots. One would be ADA and then the other would be regular.
Yeah. It's a good thought.
I think that would be fine.
Yeah. Cause we are over what we require anyway. So.
Yes.
Yeah. So that would make sense to do it in that area.
All right. Let's, let's just do that.
I think that's state regulated, isn't it, Warner? Yeah. It's not town regulated.
That, that's correct. You know, most of that is, you know, is a, comes through the state fire marshal's office. Uh, they're the ones that do all your barrier free, uh, your barrier free permitting, uh, and, and review. Uh, certainly the town, you know, is, is enjoined, you know, on the enforcement level of that as well, but it's not a spec, it's not necessarily a specific charge, you know, that's given, you know, that's given to, you know, your local jurisdiction.
Yeah. Scott's not really elaborated in our, in our ordinances, except under that general umbrella that says it's got to meet all of the, all of the regulations that aren't listed here. So.
Right. That, that, that's correct. This would fall, you know, this would fall under, you know, your NFPA regs, which are, you know, which are managed by, you know, the state.
Right.
Ironically, also by the fire chief, um, you know, as well as, uh, you know, any requirements that would, you know, that would come about in the international, uh, building code. Uh, but ADA is a federal, you know, it's a federal requirement, uh, but as such it, it comes through this, you know, the enforcement that comes through the state.
The, uh, our ordinance is required that the, that for you, you to issue the final building permits, that the state fire marshal needs to review them.
Yeah, if there are those that are required.
Realize that people who park in the parking lot there and either one of them, if it's pouring rain, have a much longer way to go to get to their cottage.
I, I'd love to point out to the board that what we're doing is removing an asphalt jungle essentially from an, uh, an area that was naturally populated prior to the development of these cottages and relocating it to a smaller area of the property. So I think that what we're doing here is accretive to the, the value of the neighborhood. Um, it makes for a better experience. Um, I think that from a guest perspective, all you have to do is look at properties like Cabot Cove cottages where they've done a similar type, type of relook. And, and I think it's not inconsistent, which, which happened in town previously. I think it creates a better overall experience for people who are staying here. Um, it also provides a better, more, um, more appealing landscape for the neighborhood.
I'm all for it. All you need is a couple of beehives with all those plants.
I love it. That's a great, great idea.
May I ask one, one more question? And maybe Werner, this is for you. What, can you remind me what the requirement is on impervious surface in the Village Residential Zone, non-shore land?
So in Village Residential, uh, non-shore land, you're looking principally at the, uh, you're, you're looking principally at the buildings, you know, in terms of, uh, in terms of, you know, the impervious coverage and, uh, in, in anything that's a structured definition, which in this case, you know, isn't necessarily going to, it's not going to include your parking area. Uh, there are the performance standards, uh, that, you know, that do discuss how much of, you know, the lot area, you know, can be taken up with, you know, with, you know, with development, you know, for hotels, uh, motels and ends. Uh, and I think Tom made reference to that before, and I'm sure Stevie took, you probably even looked at that, uh, when this plan was being developed. It's in Article seven.
Seven, seven A.
Yep.
It says buildings plus parking have to be less than either 25 or 33%, depending on how high the buildings are.
Correct. Yep.
I think Steve's plans talk about a 25% requirement. So like a maximum building coverage.
Yeah. Building plus parking lot. Coverage is the one that's specified to seven, seven A. Although since it was built before, before 2015, it's exempt from seven, seven, eight.
Actually, the, the parking area is being built now.
Yeah, that's true. Warner, story or two-story building? It's all, it's all, well, I guess the, the main inn is, is two-story and everything else is one. Is that correct?
The, the cottages are one-story. The main inn is actually three stories.
Three stories.
More than two, more than one.
Correct. Right. Um, Werner, I might be wrong about this, but I believe we are decreasing the amount of impervious surface area by making these changes.
We are.
Yep. Yeah.
I, I, I thought so too, Rob, but I, it didn't pop out at me from the data. And whoever writes this up, it would be good to be able to say, yes, and this was taken care of too.
Yep. No, that, that's correct. I mean, that, that, you know, that's a good point that, you know, that we often deal with on, on shoreline zoned, uh, properties, you know, when there's a recognition of, you know, whatever the coverage is, if it's something that exceeds what the zoning, you know, if it's a grandfathered, um, you know, lot coverage or development percentage, you know, that's always a, a consideration to look at whether that number is increasing or decreasing.
Yeah. I'm just looking at the stormwater report, which talks about, uh, the parking lot. And the existing parking lot's about 4,000 square feet and the new one's about 2,000 square feet. So there's almost half, um, reduction there.
Makes you a hero in my eyes, Steve.
It's your idea, Rob. We just took it, ran with it.
Is, is there a way, Steve, to, to make a statement that says that the impervious area has been decreased by X?
And put that on the plan?
Yeah.
Yep. Yep.
That'd be great. Thanks.
Okay. Uh, Larry, anything?
Well, my only question goes back to the parking area. So I, I understand you're going to be filling in a, well, you're going to add some fill in the new parking area. Is that correct?
Yes.
So, so my question involves, uh, involves the, just the, whether you need to, um, stabilize the edge of the parking area with some kind of little block wall or something. Otherwise, how are you going to prevent the gravel and all that from dissipating?
Uh, let me see if I, for the grade plan. We've got the grade plan. So this is a grade plan for the parking lot. Um, each one of these lines is a foot grade drop as you come off the road. Um, so you start up high and then it pitches all the way down to hide to the parking lot on this side and on this side with just grading back down to existing grade.
So you're sloping it to meet existing.
Blend in with what's existing. Blend in with what's existing.
Okay. Oh, that looks great. I, I will say, I'm glad you're going to involve an arborist though, because I know that even though you won't be digging down toward the roots, adding a little burden on the root area can also be a problem.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Just for your point, both of your points are well taken on the arborist. One of the most important components of this redevelopment is to create a natural setting that feels very much like Maine, uh, which is why Steve is very focused on native plants. Uh, we, we want to preserve as many of the large trees as possible. Uh, it feels very much like a pine grove, and I think, you know, we're, we're working very hard to make sure that we, uh, respect the natural landscape that's here already.
Okay, great.
All right, so if there are no other questions, does everybody feel that this, uh, plan is complete?
I would move that the plan be accepted as complete.
Second.
I'll second that.
Okay, let me just go through the usual list here. I'm in favor. Nina?
In favor.
Scott?
In favor.
Ed?
In favor.
And Larry?
In favor.
Okay, so what that means is that two weeks hence, we will have a, on the 17th, I guess, we'll have a public hearing on this. And the only thing I need now is a volunteer as, as a, as a case manager.
I can do it.
Okay, Scott is the case manager. Okay, so need to help, help Scott with the, the non-conformances for, for Warner, so that we can get a proper listing of what is non-conformant. So, okay, well, so we'll see you in, uh, two weeks, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank you, yep.
All right, so now we bring us to the third item, which is number 210, 202, the Schmello Family LLC Trade Center Authorized Agent Site Plan Initial Review for Approval to Convert the Second Floor, which was previously retail space into two apartments. Now, now we real do, really do need Mr. Schmello, uh, Mr. Schmello to be into the, uh, conversation.
Okay, we have two attendees labeled Raymond Schmello. Could the real Raymond Schmello raise his blue hand?
Uh, you're also going to want to, uh, promote David Wade from Trade Center.
All right.
And to muddy the water here, Warner, why are we seeing this when, when residential rental accommodation is the business of the zoning board of appeals, according to the land use ordinance?
So it's not a, it's not a residential rental accommodation. Um, what you have here is a residential mixed use.
Is, is that, is that a conditional on us or?
That, that is a conditional on the planning board.
Because I don't, I don't see residential mixed use in section, uh, three, 4.5 at all.
Yeah, that's, let me pull that up for you.
Is that Schmello to turn the video on?
Yep.
Apparently it's long, it's a part of the.
Right, it's, it's, it's conditional in the riverfront, Cape Porpoise and the Free Enterprise Zone.
Right, this is Dock Square, right?
Right, it's not a conditional use for Dock Square.
That is correct. That's what I'm seeing on here. Let me look at the, let me go to the old paper version.
I'm looking at the old paper version.
I'm looking at the old paper version also, so.
Okay.
Old.
Not on the old paper version and it's not on the 220 version.
Yeah. As correct, it shows up in the riverfront and Dock Squ- and it is not shown on the list in, in the Dock Square.
Make this possessive on the first, the second and fourth Thursday, it should be key, Thursday's apostrophe S, I just read them. It should be when I have it on Sunday.
Well, what I'd like to do for this, I'd like to go back to the original warrant article, uh, just to ensure that that's, you know, wasn't, wasn't an omission in the, you know, in the print here, uh, on the L U O. Um, it could be, you know, certainly this could be reviewed, you know, as a, you know, as, as the addition of a, uh, permitted use, you know, to it as a two-family, uh, but I'd like to go back and look at the original warrant article for this. My recollection had been that it was, it was in a use that was included in Dock Square, but I'm not seeing it in the, in the print here or the, or the paper.
When would that have been, Warner?
Uh, that would have been in, would have been, I want to say in 17, yeah, maybe 17 or 18.
Some number of years ago, you're saying?
That is correct, yes. Yeah, that was a good, that was a good number of years ago that, uh, growth planning, uh, directed that as a, directed that as a warrant article.
Okay.
But yeah, yep. So I'll have to.
Is that, I miss the accessory apartment change went in?
Uh, they were, yes, they occurred around a similar time, around a similar timeframe.
Okay.
Yep.
So the obvious question is where do we go from here?
Yeah. So there's a couple of, you know, there's a couple of routes that you could go. I mean, you could get, you could, you know, you could hear a presentation by the applicant, you know, for, you know, for the use, uh, or we could table the application, uh, to the next, to the next meeting until we've addressed, uh, you know, until we've addressed the, the use issue in the L U O. Those would be your two choices.
Well, I guess, I mean, the guy's here, he went, well, I mean, it's a fairly simple app if it's, if it's, if it's, uh, allowed by.
It's a relatively straightforward, uh, you know, app, yep.
I'm perfectly willing to speak if you want me to.
Feel free.
Okay. My name, yeah, okay. I know Ray's in here also listening. My name's Dave Wade from the Trade Center, and I'm here on the behalf of the Schmello family and their LLC. What you have before you is, uh, the plan to change the second floor of each building to two apartments. Uh, this place is, was built in 1985. Uh, the work that we're going to be doing will not impact any exterior, uh, shape, size or anything. But the only thing that'll be different is we will be doing upgrades for windows. Uh, some of the windows in these spaces are display windows, which would be turned into regular, uh, double hung to match, uh, the architecture of the building. We also had put a couple of buildings overlooking the parking area so that the apartments would have some additional lighting. Um, we'd like to change these into apartments because over a period of time, uh, putting restaurants and retailing stuff upstairs, it's just, you know, we just did a bunch of first floor repair on building A. Uh, so the idea would be to, uh, split each building, second floor into two apartments. They'd be about 750 square feet each, nice, large, single bedroom apartments. Uh, Ray does have parking on the backside of the building in which he would, um, designate four parking spaces. There are currently either seven or eight. Uh, he had designated four of those for the apartments, uh, even though I don't think Dock Square requires it, but he's got the space and that would be the great thing to do. Um, during this, we'll be upgrading the, the mechanical and electrical, uh, making that area to meet, uh, the energy codes and stuff so that they'd be year-round buildings. Uh, I think it'd be kind of nice to have, uh, you know, some large, single bedroom apartments available in Dock Square area. I can envision, you know, chefs or people that are working in the areas that are, uh, all season, uh, living in these spaces. Uh, I know Ray has a couple of things he'd like to add, but, uh, other than that, we're here for your questions.
Okay. I, I really miss the breakfast burritos though, it's, it's salt and honey, but.
Yeah, um, they, they're gone and I, they're corned, uh, relish they had, I loved too.
Okay, anyway, I don't have any, any questions other than obviously the, uh, the land use ordinance issue, when that's not your problem, although it might turn into your problem. Uh, all right, uh, Nina, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have a few questions. Um, one, your application is a little bit sparse, um, even though you referenced the deed by book and page, you should really include a copy of it so we can see if there are any easements or anything like that. Um, two, I don't know who's representing what here. If you're representing the owner, I think there should be a power of attorney attached to the application.
The town has a letter of saying that I am the authorized agent for Schmello LLC.
Okay.
If I need to do, that's been there before. If I need to do something else, please let me know.
Okay, and, all right, uh, Warner, have we been given that?
Uh, we, we do have, we do have previous, uh, letters of authorization, um, you know, for, for Trade Center to represent, uh, Schmalos.
Okay, then a copy of it should probably go with the application. Um, the questions I have on the upgrades, you say that, you know, there have been problems and so forth. Um, and looking at your plans, I'd like to know where, I assume that in, I assume that the fire code requ- requires, uh, at least two entrances or exits. Um, and I'd like to see where on the plan those are.
We were going to be using the existing entrances, uh, because breaking them down into two apartments, we'd have entrances onto the deck. We are also going to be, uh, replacing the bedroom windows with Egress windows and where I think we're, uh, 12 feet to the ground from those, so we should meet those with no problem.
Okay.
As far as Egress and entrance and stuff.
Okay, has the fire marshal looked at this?
Not yet. We're looking to make sure we can do it. Uh, we have already on one side, uh, done a two-hour sealing between the first floor and the second floor when we were doing the renovation. It was a lot easier to do that then, than to try to go back and undo everything, uh, later. So we are looking at doing two-hour fire separation between first and second floors.
Okay, and these are going to be long-term apartments? They're not going to be day-to-day rentals or anything like this?
Long-term, absolutely. The longer the better.
Okay, all right. Well, those were my questions, so.
All right, Scott?
Yes, so my, my only question is to wait for the clarification of, uh, the code.
Yeah, okay. Uh, Ed?
Follow-on to Nina's question. Well, currently your thoughts may be the, to rent these long-term, uh, wouldn't you be able to basically turn these over to Airbnb and, and rent them out on a, on a daily basis?
That's, that's not the intent. Uh, Ray is looking to have, uh, you know, be able to do year-round and be able to have, you know, tenants in the building all the time. Uh, Airbnb is seasonal and cyclical. I'm not sure what the, you know, we're not close to the ski slopes, we're not close to the, 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 the snow stuff, so he'd rather have them, you know, rented by professionals or anybody in the area for, uh, long-term.
I, I understand that's, that's his preference. That really wasn't, wasn't my question. Is there any, um, anything that would preclude you from renting these at a elevated rate during the summer months on a daily basis and then renting them for six months over the winter and, and asking those people to leave and then getting the benefit of that elevated, uh, rate during the summertime?
It's not the intention, um, at this point, what happens, you know, 30 years down the road, I, you know, don't have control of. Um, we're looking for.
I understand, and maybe this is a question for, for Warner as well. Is, is there anything that, uh, we would, we would do here that would say, no, this is, we're not approving another pseudo hotel in the middle of Dock Square? We, we have a case in hand where the board just approved, um, basically a, a, a multiplex and, and two single-family homes over on Langsford Road, and, and now it's being advertised as a, basically a privatized Airbnb hotel. I, I, I'm wondering if we're doing the same thing here in Dock Square?
So, uh, so as you know, the town's currently working through, you know, the board of selectmen are, are working through a process of, of, of putting forward a short-term rental licensing ordinance. And so currently, nothing, you know, in the ordinance, you know, would prevent for resident, you know, prevents residential dwelling units from being rented on a short-term basis. So absent there being any type of specific restriction, uh, for instance, something that the planning board, uh, you know, could in conjunction with the owner, you know, agree to a restriction that would limit it to, um, you know, to, uh, these being primary residences and not short-term rentals.
Right.
You know, that's, you know, that's something that could show up in a, you know, in a, in a condition of, of approval.
All right.
But currently, there's nothing in ordinance that, you know, prevents residential dwelling units, uh, from being rented, uh, on a short-term basis.
Thank you.
I thought that residential mixed use was a residential use and couldn't be used like accessory apartments or short-term rentals.
They, uh, I'll dig into the performance standards piece of it. Um, you know, it is referenced as, you know, as, as the desire for it to be is to, is to help create workforce housing, and so it certainly is in the intent that these not be utilized as short-term rentals.
Well, maybe we just clarify that as a condition. That, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, um, so I think we're, we're, sorry, clarity.
So I just had a couple of points of clarification. So the current situation is there's two buildings and you want to put two apartments on the second level of each building, so a total of four?
Correct.
Okay. And will these apartments be, well, be designated or be, be, you know, will there be a possibility they be designated as someone's permanent residence? In other words, they can get mail there, they can use it as an address for their driver's license and vehicle registration and putting children in school? Is that the idea? So it's really, they really will be permanent residences and not, um, some sort of, uh, well, temporary or?
Yeah, the idea is.
Hotel-type residence?
Yeah, the idea would be have somebody coming in that's working or wants to live down in the Dock Square area, uh, you know, the, like I said earlier, you know, a chef for one of the restaurants or something like that and just, you know, wants to not be a seasonal rental and not moving in and out and just say, hey, this is my house.
Okay, so you're going to have some.
There are some other, uh, properties in town that are the same way, so I'm sure as far as addresses and stuff like that. as addresses and stuff like that, you know, it is 24 Ocean Ave. Either we assign and set up mailboxes for those apartments, or they would do P O boxes, which is not that far away, they can walk.
Well, that was my question, so you're going to have some sort of mail, mail-receiving mailboxes or something on the site?
It might be so close to the post office that they're not allowed to have delivery. You have to be, you have to be half a mile or something away from the post office before you can get delivery to your place.
Okay, so then my other question was, so I did notice that you commented on the, I guess, the water damage from frozen pipes-
Correct.
-in previous years, which resulted in your proposal, your current proposal. And the idea is that if you have these four apartments occupied, they'll, the owners will keep, well, maintain some level of heat. But what happens if some owner isn't there for the winter, his pipes freeze, and then you still get your water damage? Is all that going to be on the renter, or how are you going to share the liability here?
Well, the, and Ray's got his, Ray, are you there?
He's muted right now.
Yeah, Ray, if you can hear me, over to the left-hand side is like a little microphone. Take your mouse and click on that.
I see it, I see it.
There we go.
I see it.
You've been listening, have I been doing okay so far?
Not really. You could do a little bit better if you, you know-
Thank you.
I hope you're getting paid for this.
We'll see. They're basically asking about responsibility if a tenant says they're going to take off for three months and go visit somewhere, you know, and they don't, you know, I guess, I don't think they would turn off their heat anyway, but, you know, just trying to make sure that the water problems and windows being left open and sinks freezing up isn't going to happen again.
We have property managers on call, my son's there, and what we do is we would check out the heating elements inside the unit, and make sure that at least 50 degrees. And the tenant would know that when they left, so we would cover ourselves in that way. Make sure that, make sure that we have heat always.
So it'd be part of their tenant agreement.
So, okay, so you would retain a key, even though you'd, well, you would have leased it out for someone's residence?
Yeah, we'd have the master, master key for all the units.
Okay.
And we're responsible, we would be responsible for the units, yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, that sounds great, thank you.
As far as the mail goes, the post office, like I said, we're too close to the post office, and all mail is delivered to the post office at no charge. They will give them each a mailbox at no charge.
Okay, all right, good deal. All right, thank you.
Okay, so I guess what we need from David is copy the deed and a copy of the letter that says that Mr. Schmello defers to you as his representative.
I must be drunk when I did it, but.
Anyway, so, so that's-
Yeah, we'll get one, what I've done before, Warner, and just update the date.
Yeah, I think, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Yep.
So, anyway, we'll see you again in two weeks, and hopefully we'll, but we are not going to take any action on declaring it complete, because we don't exactly know how we're standing in terms of the land use ordinance, so.
Yep, I'll pull the, I'll pull the original warrant article, you know, and check that, confirm that.
Okay, so, anyway, we'll probably see you in two weeks, and then at that, at which point, we'll, we would presumably declare the application complete and be able to proceed to there. So, let's see. Okay, well, I guess, I'm going to see if one of the, if George or John wants to take this as a, as a responsibility of assuming we get, we need case managers, but, so I guess that's it, thank you for the presentation, and I hope we get it all squared away, so you can go do this thing. Thank you.
So I'll get the paperwork over to Lisa, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, very good, thanks. So I need a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, so we're good. All right, thank you, folks, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you all.